Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 12, 2019 Board of Education Regular Meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. So our first item is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we are at the Report on Student Achievement and the School Report Card. So I think Dr. Levy and Dr. Beavis are coming to the table. Great.
Okay, we're going to group the opening of school report, the school report card, and the report on student achievement together in one slide deck. We'll pause for questions intermittently.
Okay, thank you.
All right, okay. Hi, good evening. How's everyone? So opening of school, which is our official enrollment as of September 30th. Every year it's just as of September 30th. So this year's official enrollment is 3,693. I feel like my headline is the same as last year, highest enrollment in over 30 years. So when it figures, I'm probably going to update it to over 40 years. So that's our enrollment, and that's all buildings, including your new building, five-day And these is, this is our enrollments disaggregated by race, ethnicity. The charts show enrollment trends over the past five years. So proportionally, we see that our Hispanic, Latinx population proportionally is the highest in history. And so is our Asian proportionally. It's not, I don't have it on here, but they're 5.8%, which is the highest in history there. Also, we see our African-American black population proportionally has been decreasing over the past five years. So this year proportionally, it's at 25.9. Thank you. And a slight increase, similar to slight increase for proportions for our white population. Our special ed enrollments fluctuate over the, every year, kind of slightly year to year, and they look like they're up slightly to a total of 410 this year. And our bilingual enrollments, again, they're small, so they fluctuate, and they look down slightly this year. Those are just the highlights for the opening of school enrollment. Is there any questions for that?
I just want to make a quick comment, a little shout-out. That's something you didn't cover, but the, within that, there was some information about the staff. Maybe, maybe I'm mixing this up now. My notes, since you jumped around, maybe I mixed it up. But, but the staff diversity, the level of preparation and retention, so again, if I'm conflating reports, I apologize. But just, I wanted to give a shout-out to Toya and her team and all the people that have to do with hiring, because I thought those numbers looked great. So I think I'm conflating with another report.
It's in the report card.
It's all, yeah, it's in one of the reports. So I think that's terrific. So shout-out to them.
Other questions?
Okay. Report card, Pete's going to do report card.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Illinois report card. One of the things I want to do as a preamble to the report card is just talk through basically a cautionary tale of how we need to be very careful in how we look at state standards and how we look at college remediation rates and how we look at college readiness benchmarks. Up here, you see a chart. This is a type-one, type-two error chart. Does the student meet standards? If ISBE says yes, and yes is actually the correct answer, then we're all good to go. That's great. If ISBE says no, and the student, if ISBE's decision is yes, the student is ready, and then we're at a no, he's not really ready, or she's not really ready, then what we end up with is a type-one error. All measurement tries strenuously to avoid type-one errors. Anytime they set bars on things, they're designed so that we don't have students who are college-ready or who do meet standards who really don't. So that's why they're very strict about that construct. However, what if ISBE's decision is no, the student is not ready, but the student actually does, is actually, could actually meet state standards? What that means is there's a flaw with the system. There's a flaw with the actual decision-making. And that's a type-two error. And type-two errors is where equity lives. We have to be very mindful when we use terms like, did you meet standards? Didn't you meet standards? We have to always go back to the construct and then question that construct. So for example, is the student college-ready? Here's a very clear example. If the college board says yes, credentials, that you met a certain benchmark on a test, they say yes, you are, and the student, in fact, goes off to college and does really well. Right? That's, that's the perfect outcome. That's correct on both sides of the equation. If the college board says yes, the student is ready for college, meets the college readiness benchmark, the student goes off and does not complete college, drops out, what have you, then that is a type-one error. But what about the student who the college board says is not college-ready based on a test score? But who is actually ready? What's the impact of labeling that student non-college-ready? It may be a deterrent. It may be a deterrent to exploring post-secondary options. We just need to be very aware of how that shows up. And finally, community college remediation programs, zero-level courses, non-credit-bearing. There are decisions made about this all the time. They use different metrics. What they really don't want, they're very vigilant about this. They do not want a student who is not ready for college-bearing math credit to show up in a college-bearing math credit course. That's, that's steeped in history, but it's not really steeped in anything but history. Because we have plenty of students who are ready to go off and do well in college-bearing credit courses who do not meet their criteria. So we just need to be very, very clear about this. We've been in conversation with Oakton about type-two errors in their math placement. Because we want to see more and more students enter into that college credit-bearing courses. If they don't, they end up oftentimes dropping out, and it forecloses many, many opportunities. So type-two is where equity lives. It's where access to college, access to curriculum really, really lives. So I just want to be mindful, because tonight I'm going to talk about standards. I'm going to talk about meeting standards. I'm going to talk about college readiness. But I just want us to be mindful that those are constructs, and that I'm not saying that anyone in particular is college-ready or is not.
Yeah.
Good? All right. All right, so, school report card, SAT. In the green areas, you see that's meets or exceeds state standards, and that's where we best the state on those measures. So you'll see for white, black, Hispanic, Latinx, Asian students, and two or more races, you'll see the green areas are coded. Level three is meets state standards, level four is exceeds. So we meet or exceed well beyond what the state does. That's why that's there as a comparison. And that's true in both ELA and math. So that's some context in how to read the charts. I added the green. Children with disabilities and students with IEPs for the first time. The state report card has decided to report children with disabilities. They're using.
IEP and 504.
Yes, IEP and 504 for that subgroup. And you will see the results there compared to the state. Again, in green, meets and exceeds are clearly outlined there. Eighty percent of students enroll in college within 16 months of graduating ETS. And you see historically, we hover anywhere between 81 to a low of 78 and around 80. What that does not tell us, though, that also tells us that 20% do not enroll in college within 16 months. And that's one of the reasons we're involved with the Mayor's Employment Advisory Council, or MEAC, because we're here to help all young people find their own path through a career. We believe there are many roads to success. So we work to shine a light on the full range of career opportunities and the many ways to get there. Whether their entry point is straight from high school or from college, we help young people make plans to choose a job with a future to succeed and thrive. So again, it's great that 80% of our students enroll, but we need to be mindful of all of our graduates. Nineteen percent of this, of that 80% enroll in community college. And 81, yeah, it's 81% enroll in four-year. And that brings us to the ISBE summative designation. You may remember the ISBE summative designation from Carrie's pie chart. And there's Carrie's pie chart. That's how the state figures out our designation. Our designation for the second year in a row is commendable. And Carrie will walk you through briefly how that is actually calculated.
So the pie chart shows all of the variables, the measures that go into the state's calculation. So they calculate performance for each of these indicators. Fifty percent is based on the graduate rate. Four-year is weighted higher than five-year graduation rate, which is weighted higher than six-year. And the remaining 50% is divided up this year by science, the science scores. That's going to change next year because we're doing a new science assessment. So next year will be science participation. This year, it's on the ISA biology science scores. Seven and a half percent is the SAT proficiency, which was, they're calling proficiency, the state standards. Seven and a half percent is the SAT math. And then there's the freshman on track. That's 8.3%. And then the climate survey, that's student participation in the five essentials. Then the chronic absenteeism rate. And then EL, the last one is the English learner progress to proficiency. That's student performance on the access. Our students who are English learners, who need, who are required to take the state-mandated access test. And what the state does is it calculates performance data for each of these indicators, converts that to an indicator score on a, on a scale of 0 to 100, weights it, averages it, creates an index score, and then it ranks all the schools in the state based on that index score, cuts off the top 20%, calls them exemplary, cuts off the bottom 5%, identifies them as lowest-performing. And then in the middle, any district that has a subgroup that's below that bottom 5% is identified as underperforming. And then the rest in the middle with no subgroups below the lowest are commendable. And that's how the state determines the summative designation. So with second year in a row, we're in the commendable category. Okay, any questions on the report card or summative designation?
Thank you for explaining that to us.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, Gretchen.
So on the part, the slide where you show the graduation rate, Pete, Dr. Beavis, sorry. You made some remarks about how it's all great that we've got a large number of students who are going to college, but we're also mindful of the fact that we have some of our students going either to something other than a four-year college, straight into work, the military, et cetera. Are we doing anything, or is there currently a way to track that?
I'll start.
I know we've had this, I know we've had versions of this discussion, both here and at our Cradle to Career meetings. I just, I think it's an opportunity to talk about how we can, if we're going to recognize that, acknowledge it, support it, how are, how are we going to pay attention to it?
Right, how do we build an infrastructure to correct, collect that data? Carrie, do you have any thoughts on how we can do that, or how we've started to figure that out?
Beyond, we have, all seniors are required to take a survey. And so we ask them their plans. We know where final transcripts go. That's, that's where they've maybe been accepted in their plan. This is based on the National Clearinghouse data, but it's not all schools share their data with the clearinghouse, so it's as good as they get, as the schools that participate, majority of them do. So that tells us that, but the students who, for example, do not go enroll, and, and some of other schools, maybe that we know students go to, are not in this clearinghouse data. But I think the, a start is the senior survey and that asks students where they go.
Another thing that we're doing.
Or what their plans are, sorry.
Is through our work with NERA and YJC, we're able to connect students to employers. And then if they go through that system, then we can track those outcomes. But again, we're trying to capture as many students as possible in that, but we, it's very difficult once students leave our, our setting to follow up and locate students who are not enrolled in community college, not enrolled in college, who are not using MEAC or YJC. So that's, that's an abiding problem. One of the things that we've often discussed is creating, you know, gifting students a LinkedIn account, and it's creating like a LinkedIn group, right? So then being able to monitor it that way. But a lot of that stuff is back of the, you know, sort of just back-of-the-envelope brainstorming.
Yeah, would hard, be hard to get a sample. Yes, Pat?
So I had a question. So, and it came up under the chronic absenteeism for me, and especially on your pie chart, because that was 10% of our, how we got to commendable, right? So, and, and help me if I'm not reading the data correctly, but it seemed like what the state was saying and what you were saying our numbers internally are, didn't seem to sink quite, at least, I didn't see it as, as quite in alignment. I could see it being off a little, because they calculate things a little, but it seemed a little more off than just rounding errors and, and things. And so I guess that opened a question for me in terms of how they calculate lots of the benchmarks beyond, beyond chronic absenteeism. And, you know, how we should kind of read, are we looking at apples and oranges? And what, what do we need to know in terms of that data and how they calculate versus how we calculate? Sorry, Carrie, I know you feel terrible.
I'll start, and then Pete, you can help fill in. So they've re, they have changed how they calculate, starting with attendance. They've changed how they calculate attendance. My apologies. So they used to do, they would calculate every day, an average of every day, and they would average that. So it used to be an average of an average. Now it's just the entire, every student, every day, entire school year, one big average. That's a big change in how those numbers show up in our average and daily attendance. And then also, it's the denominator in how they calculate chronic truancy and chronic absenteeism. So our chronic absenteeism rate, it's, it's total attendance, it's unexcused and excused, it's all attendance, whereas chronic truancy is unexcused only. There are certain, like, absence codes that go into that. And then it's divided by that macro, like, total average daily enrollment. And that's a change, I believe, from how they even were calculating chronic absenteeism last year. So last year was the first year they did it, and then they just changed the formula a little bit, and that's made also an impact.
So Carrie, if I'm on the debate team and I'm in school for debate, does that count against us?
I'm sorry.
If I'm on the debate team and I go to a tournament and I miss Friday and Monday as part of a school function, does that count, where does that count?
Chronic absent, it's going to count into your, it may be an excused absence, but it's going to count under chronic absenteeism. If, if you're on the debate team, you have a field trip, you know, they can all add up, and they'd all capture it under chronic absenteeism. For students who are absent, I believe it's like ton of more percent.
Interesting, okay. So if you look under the hood at other benchmarks, do you have other quirks like that that don't tell the whole story?
Well, I have one that you'll see in the achievement report. The college readiness benchmark for the SAT does not line up with the state benchmark for meet standards. Actually, the state benchmark for meet standards in reading, writing, and English, and also in math, is higher than the college readiness benchmark. The college readiness benchmark was established by the SAT, and again, we talked about type-one and type-two errors earlier. But they based theirs, they looked at how students did their first semester of freshman year in college, whether they got a C or better, or a B or better, and then they ran probabilities off of specific test scores. So that's what it means to be college-ready, according to their test. The ISBE sat down with some educators, some teachers, and some administrators, and asked, they looked at the SAT and essentially said, what do you think of this question? Do you think this question, a student would have to get this question right to meet standards? And they went through the test, and they came up with a number, which would be that, those items correct, and they got a higher benchmark, using no psychometricians, using no data analysis, than the actual folks who ran the numbers. So that's why, when you look under the hood, things are inconsistent.
I think you can also add science proficiency to this. The science proficiency in the current state is the science assessment that's given to students in their biology class. Majority of students are ninth grade, but we do have 10th grade students. And feedback I've seen is, it's supposed to be aligned to NGSS standards, but some of the items and the questions they ask are not taught in biology. They're, you know, that's their entry-level science. So that's debatable, whether or not that'll change. Now going forward, all grade 11 students will have to take science, and it will include life science, science, other, you know, sciences that they, I think they've been testing on, but they hadn't learned yet. So that may be another one, I think that's another one also.
Thank you.
That's interesting, because it's, it sounds like if, as you explain those, I would want to go through all of them, because they're questionable, so.
Climate survey is participation. So it's purely student participation in five essentials. I've looked at the, I've looked at all of them. The one that, when I've looked under the hood and I've looked at the data that lines up is the, the freshman on track, and that's, I think we had like 94% that met that when I lined up those students, so.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a question. Looking at the ISBE ESA Plan, and you have it broken down by four indicators for college readiness, how many of the four indicators would we want to see our students achieving in, in order for us to have this definition of college-ready?
So I think that's actually a great question for segueing into the achievement report, the four, the ones that we have on the achievement report. Do you want to segue? Can you segue into that? Okay, any more questions for?
All right. The Illinois State ESA Plan, and the way we reported in the achievement report, academic indicators are identified by ISBE. They include a GPA of 2.8 or greater, 95% attendance rate, at least one English language arts academic indicator, and at least one math and science academic indicator. It's also important to note that the information reported tonight is not related in any way to the Northwestern Evanston Education Research Alliance, NERA. They do a compass for us, and we'll talk about that at a later date, but the, I don't want to confuse the two.
Yeah, great.
So English language arts, here we go. This is a great example. The state says they must attain one of the following. And this is really tricky, because what they're really saying is, to be college-ready, two of the indicators are to take an English language arts AP course. So that means you're going to take either English language and composition or English language literature. You're going to get an A, B, and C, or C in that course, or you're going to get a three or higher. So two of the four are contingent upon enrollment, not in any AP class, but in AP English. So if we wanted everybody to be college-ready, we'd simply enroll all of our juniors into AP English, and then figure out the grade sorting after that. That's very cynical. We would never do that. However, that's what that indicator really privileges here. It privileges not just any advanced placement class, not a dual-credit course, but English AP classes. And there's only two of them. They also say a reading or writing SAT subject score of 480 or higher, and ACT English score of 18 or higher in the ACT. We did that for comparison purposes, because that's what the benchmark used to be for the, for the, when we used to give the universal ACT test, and the reading subject test of 22 on the ACT. That's more for historical purposes. Obviously, we don't use that going forward, we use the SAT. In math, you'll see the indicators are a bit lower. I'm going to say they're a bit lower, because one of the courses that the majority of our, vast majority of our students take as part of their math sequence is the first bullet. You need to get an A, B, or C in two-algebra. You don't have to take a math AP class. You can, but you can get an A, B, or C in two-algebra and be college-ready. Again, I don't think that's a fair comparison to the English side of the equation, where you don't take English II, Writing Workshop, and get, be deemed college-ready by the state. No, you have to take an AP class in English. In math, you have to take two-algebra. Or you can take an AP class in math, earn an A, B, or C, get a three or higher on the exam, and there's your subject test. So again, I think there's a, I would anticipate seeing more students be ready in math, given the indicator, than on the English side, just by virtue of what they chose to include. So, do you want me to keep talking? Because I'll save your voice, I'll just read the definitions, or I'll just tell people they're up there. The definitions are up there in the report. We good? No, you don't need, I'm just going to move. And here are our cohorts. Go ahead, you good? Okay.
Good, I'm good. I'm sorry. So this slide, this is in the report. This is just our population. This is the number of students in each subgroup. In the report for the class of, oh, each cohort, but this class of 29 is what the report focuses on, the students who just graduated. It's those that had graduated in four years, but it also includes that full cohort, so students who are still enrolled or who not yet graduated. And so this is just our, the numbers and the portion as you look at the rest of the data in the report. So highlights from the report for class of 2019, 65% achieved a GPA of 2.8 or greater. That GPA cut point is, is grounded in what was, is stated in the ESA Plan. So in addition to looking at the percent that met this cut, we looked at the mean GPA to really give it more context, and I'll have a slide on that. Average attendance rate across four years of high school is 92%. 65% met one or more of those English language arts proficiencies that Pete walked through, and 78% met one or more of the math proficiency, not proficiency, but those indicators. 80% had no more than four behavioral referrals throughout four years at high school, and 80% participated in at least one extracurricular activity.
Can I add two things before we jump ahead?
Yes, please.
One is that, I just want to say that the retrospective nature of this report does not tell us what's happening now. This is a historical, in a way, it bookends a student's experience at ETS, right? This is last year's graduating cohort, is one way to look at it. So it's very important to think about that. And the other thing that's going to come up is that the greatest predictor of student achievement is previous student achievement. You're going to see that, too, and it's going to speak to the cohort strength and what we were able to do as a school with the cohort.
So GPA, this chart looks at mean GPA. So the, the line is the 2.8 GPA, and this reports disaggregated by race, ethnicity, and gender, intersection of race and gender, the mean GPA for each subgroup. And this is, so where I was saying 65% have a GPA 2.8 or higher, the mean GPA for all students is a 3.0. The mean attendance rate is, is 92% for the class of 2019. That's across four years. That's a really high bar. So when we looked in the report, this looks at the percent by each subgroup, that their mean attend, the mean attendance rate by subgroup. So there's, in the report, the table shows the percent that met the benchmark, and then what the mean attendance rate, which I think gives more context than what, just looking at the percent that met the benchmark. And because, just one quick point, the benchmark in meeting 95% attendance across four years, most groups met over 90%, but because the mean attendance rate was just below 95%, so the overall mean is 92%, that's why when you look at that, it looks like the, the percent that met the benchmark is lower. That's just because the mean is slightly under the 95%. This chart looks at, of the English language art benchmarks that Pete talked about in the beginning, taking an AP and getting an A, B, or C English language, taking the exam and getting a three or higher, and the SAT or ACT scores. 65% of the overall students met one, at least one of those benchmarks. met one, at least one of those benchmarks. And collectively, like Pete already talked about, those are highest, high standards, setting it at an AP on the college board readiness for SAT. And then this is the math, the 78% that met one or more with math, so overall, the 78% met at least one of the math benchmarks. And then the chart that's in the beginning kind of looks at, across all of those, looking at meeting one of the English Language benchmark, the math benchmark, the GPA of 2.8 or higher, or 95 attendance measure. This looks at, across the four measures, what percent of each group met at least one or two, three, or four, or all of those benchmarks. So the way you can look at this, the orange is they met all four, the red is made three, the blue is two, and so on. The bar that goes across the top, so on top where it says all students and the 75%, 75% of students met at least three of those benchmarks. And so that's what the extra bar with the extra percent reporting across each of the 80% of students have zero to four referrals, that's an average of one referral a year, so across all four years of high school. All of these were presented disaggregated by subgroup. And then, as we mentioned, the district goal for participation in an extracurricular activity is 100% participation. This is 80% participate in one or more extracurricular activity in their junior or senior year. So where some of these we've looked at across four years, this one we focus on the last two years. And so this is an increase over the last two cohorts also for these, this cohort, the class of 2019. In the report, I have four-year and five-year graduation rates disaggregated. So this slide here is just looking at the trends over the last six years, so 92% of the class of 2019 graduated within four years. If we looked at the class of 2018, 91% graduated within four years. When I look at the five-year graduation rate, where the class of 2018, 91% graduated in four years, now 94% have graduated in five years in 2019. So that 2019 five-year, that's the class of 2018. And then the report also has six-year trends, which also continue to go up. So our SAT, so all juniors are required to take the state-administered SAT on a school day in April, it's a graduation requirement for juniors. So this report here is for the class of 2019, this cohort took it in April 2018. So this is not the juniors that just took it, that's what on the report card, and that's what Pete presented earlier in the, in the slide, in the presentation. This is with our class of 2019, which is what this report is focusing on. These students took it when they were in juniors, which is April of 2018. And so here, this is to show you, the state, like Pete was mentioning, set their benchmark at 540 for English Language Arts, which is 60 some points higher than what college, the board says is a college readiness benchmark. So we've put the state because that's reported, but then we also show you the percent of our students that met the college board's benchmark, and then we report that compared to that year, the college board nationwide benchmark. And the nationwide benchmark is all states, so it's mostly college-bound seniors, this is a seniors, whereas ours are juniors. And there's a handful of states that's also in the report that administer it statewide, but it's, it's not, it's a smaller number and it's some smaller states. So there's a percent that met the benchmark. And then also for more context, provide the mean SAT score and compare it to the mean SAT score for the college-bound seniors nationwide. So this is a chart for English Language Arts. And then the same for math, same group that took it when they were in grade 11, April 2018. This is the college board's benchmark of 530. You can see what the states decided their benchmark should be, and then the comparison to the national benchmark, the percent that met it, and then the comparison of the mean SAT scores to the nationwide mean. Any questions?
I have a question.
All right, echo.
So the ISBE and state indicators of college readiness are like not super comprehensive, especially in the English department. Are there standards at ETHS that we use to evaluate college readiness, or is the designation of college readiness not really useful?
Wow. All right, here we go. You know, the college readiness benchmark from, is, from the SAT, right? That college readiness benchmark is valuable if you do not have folks who, who are dedicated, you have, we have, we have a dedicated research department at ETHS, right, that Dr. Levy is part of. We also have a partnership with Northwestern University. So when we say college ready and we start to dig into college readiness, which has more to do with the NERA work actually than this work, we have a far more nuanced view of it. Our indicators for that are actually based on ETHS outcomes for ETHS students. So when we say a student is college ready at ETHS, what you'll see when we hear the report from NERA later in the spring, is that what we're really talking about is what, what were the commonalities among students from ETHS who persisted into a fifth consecutive semester of college? That's right, to be college ready from ETHS, you have to be a second, you have to be going into your second semester of junior year, okay? It's a very high benchmark, but we've also been able to figure out what data internally aligns to that. And what we're doing is we're trying to work on having an intervention system or a compass that will help us to navigate students as their freshmen, as their sophomores, to provide just-in-time interventions and redirections so we can have more students persist in college. We really don't, I mean, this is fine if you don't have that kind of sophisticated data, you know, your nimbleness with your analytic core like we do. The college readiness benchmarks are fine for folks who don't, but we have a far more nuanced and sophisticated view of that.
And can I add, and that model that they're developing does not include SAT scores. So they've developed a model and, but we will be learning about later this year, and SAT scores are not in that model, so that says a lot right now.
Other questions?
So I think our overall averages look pretty good because we do have some really, really high performers. I'm still really taken aback by the huge discrepancy between the achievement of white students and the black male achievement and the IEP students, and I wonder if you could comment on that at all?
So, yeah, so first I'll start with IEP. So this cohort, and this focuses on our students that are in Building 1 and 299 in our alt school. So for IEP, that leaves out a whole group of students that are in off-campus placements. So when we, we start with the cohorts and the number of students in cohort, this is a much smaller group than the ones before. And so that takes into account, there's a fewer, a smaller group of students who are in this cohort that are in this, this type of analysis. So when we look at certain measures, particularly say math, for example, you can see that that definitely has an impact. So for example, if you look at math and the indicators for math, where we have two algebra, the AP math, taking the AP math and getting A, B, or C, taking AP math exam and getting a three or higher, and these, meeting these college board math benchmarks, which are all really high benchmarks, there's that. There's also, we've looked at students in their enrollment and we've talked with our special ed department and pulled it apart and looked at, while there are more opportunities for students, particularly students with IEPs that have more access and opportunities, we also looked at the data and looked at where students are and where they're performing and where they are doing on one-on-one individual basis. Thanks for your question.
Is there a reason we don't collect the data for the IEP students who are off-campus?
So they're not in these courses, so we don't have those. They're not in our AP, they're not taking courses in the building typically, so they're not part of the courses that we look at.
Do we have an understanding of how, what their college readiness looks like in other ways of looking at the data?
I think I would go back to the special ed department and ask them, because I knew, I know they look at data for students with IEPs, and I know they probably look at a lot of different data instead of this narrowly focused analysis. That's probably not the best measures for students with IEPs. So that's a good question that I'll take back and we can ask, I can talk to them.
Can I just jump in on that, that, so we're getting a report at some time this year focused on special ed, and so maybe some of the, isn't that, I'm correct about that, right? We talked about that last year. Yeah, so maybe that's some of the, they can start to, you know, peel the onion back in some of these areas, even if it's not perfect this year, so that we start a process of looking a little more deeply into, because it is, I mean, you know, I, I think with the day school, we're having less students off-campus, but we still have students off-campus, and so that would be helpful. And also to understand the students on campus with IEPs and 504, so.
And there may be better measures and we should probably do conversations and figure out how to report them.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Just want to jump in here. So as I look, every time I see these numbers, I must, I must be transparent about it. It's just so frustrating and sad, the disparities, as Liz said, between the outcomes for our black and brown students and our white students. However, it's not surprising because it's reflective of our numbers as it relates to outcomes academically. And when you consider alignment of our curriculum to these benchmarks, it makes sense that black and brown students are underperforming in their subject areas, and they do so when they take the tests as well. So I guess for me, the greater question is, what is our process and what is our approach as we interpret and unpack this data that leads to action items? Like, I actually would like to hear, I mean, I know this is not, probably not the format to get granular, but it's, it's, these numbers are consistently the same in terms of the disparities. It's like, it's, I'm expecting it. I think my, what, what's gnawing at me is, well, how do we position ourselves to change these trends? And I think that more gets to, how are we interpreting the data and what action items do we come up with? What interventions, what strategies so that we can finally get, and I know we're doing, we are doing a lot here in this district to do that. For example, with engagement, student engagement, because studies show the more engaged students are, the better they will do academically. But it's just still not enough. And, and I think that's the greater question that, that is going to relate to the numbers that we see in the subject areas too, skill-wise. But that's the greater question for me, because I'm expecting there to be a disparity, a great disparity. It's there, and our curriculum is aligned to prepare these students, and you see the disparity there too.
So I can say like two things, just briefly. One of them is that, you know, when we look at, for example, college readiness benchmarks, SAT scores, we know that the SAT scores are grounded in a bell curve and that they function as sorting machines for universities. That's why they're college admissions tests. So when you position students along a bell curve that's highly racialized historically, you do see this persistence in terms of the outcomes. The challenge is to find additional measures that complement the story. One of those things is, we really don't know, and this whole report, and I mean, this report was done, started three years ago as a way to say, we're going to get under the hood of ESA. One of the things we didn't do though, and I think we should do going forward, is really look at the qualities that we value in graduates from ETHS, and then align measures to that as well, so we could have more of a comprehensive view of what it means not only to be an ETHS student, but what we are doing to progress those outcomes. One of those things we're doing just short-term is, you know, we're asking students, we're doing a lot of focus groups. Over 670 students have been focus grouped, over 72% of those students were students of color, and we've asked them about the curriculum, we've asked them in math, in history, and we're doing major curriculum revisions in those areas along world languages and chemistry. But again, though, to your point, and it's a point well-taken, if we continue to be aligned to these outcomes and we align everything to the SAT or to whatever it is, right, some external outcome that's dictated, we will see similar patterns unless it's, we completely disrupt it. And I think one of the ways to disrupt it is to find other measures, and that begins with really defining what the qualities we're looking for as a community and as a school are for our graduates, and then back mapping those. I don't think test scores are going to go away, but I do think we could do a better job of complimenting what it means to be a student at ETHS and a successful student at that.
That's what you meant as you opened this up, right? I mean, that's what you, you're talking about is, is challenging these numbers, challenging how they're telling us to measure student success and the predictability of student success. And it is true, every time we look at these scores, everything, attendance, black males are always the lowest. And I, I agree, I applaud Jude for just highlighting that and Liz for highlighting that, that's true. But, I mean, we have to add the but when we do our work here at ETHS, because we know that this is going to be a pattern, this has been a pattern for centuries actually, not just recently, but for centuries. So even though it doesn't go away right away, we know that we have to, we, we can't, we can't accept this, we don't accept this, and then we work to defy this, these patterns. I mean, that's what you said in so many words.
Thank you.
Gretchen?
So, thank you for all this data. I, I stalled out a little bit just when I got to page 11 of the packet, which is page nine of the report, and that's the, it's tables five and six on percents of cohorts meeting one or more of English Language Arts benchmarks, and then the math benchmark. So this is not just a test score, it's also grades, and you know, we could have an argument about what grades indicate as well, but as we've, you know, recognized or acknowledged, this is sort of what we're stuck with right now. And, and when I look at this, I just, I see really not anything very great. Across the board, white male students seem to be doing just fine. Even, even white females dropped. 2018 seemed to be a better year, just generally. I'll just get that out there, I don't know what was going on, but the numbers, you know, sort of went up a little bit, but have come back down. So the, the only group here that really comes out ahead in, in table number five are white males. Now, correct, I'm sorry, and Hispanic Latino males also with a, with a bump up in, in 2018, and, and then they came back down in 2019. But everybody else has sort of gone, not just holding steady, they've sort of gone down. African-American black females, down 10% from 2017 to 2019. Black African-American males, up 3%, but that seems, so there, there just seems to be almost no good news or growth in that chart. And then in table six, it's, it's the same story. With the male, you know, Hispanic Latino males dropped 10%. African-American males, I'm sorry, are up 5%. You know, they had a, an increase in 2018 as well, but then they dropped back. So I'm just, you know, I really agree with, well, everybody really, but Jude in particular, I think, who... But Jude in particular, I think, who highlighted, you know, this is all very interesting, but what are we, what are we doing about it? And this is the system that we have right now. And there's been, it, it just looks entirely flat to me. Am I, am I wrong in characterizing it that way?
I just want to caution you though, you can't look.
From three years, yeah.
Another one.
Right.
And, and say it looks flat.
Yeah, yeah.
These are completely different human beings.
Yeah.
The, the, the group in the year before.
Right.
Graduated. Different people, different cohorts.
Right.
So be very cautious.
Yes, good point.
The other thing is, you really look, need to look at more historical data. Where were they when they came into the high school? What, what, what was their, what was the overall reading level of that class?
Right.
When they came into the high school? Or even looking at individuals, you know, how many?
Do we have that?
Individuals were, were, were struggling readers when they arrived in the ninth grade.
So can we match that up? Do we have that?
Yeah, we could do that. One of the.
That's the kind of, go ahead.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, one of the things I did with last year's juniors was I looked at their college readiness benchmark in reading coming in for the NWA MAP. And this is just roughly, right? They were, they were at 60% of the incoming class when they came in as freshmen.
Yep.
And they were, they finished with the SAT college readiness benchmark at 68. So that's pretty close. In math, they were at 55 and they went to 50, they were about flat, they were flat as well. So that speaks, it's eerie that it's that much of a predictor, right?
Yeah.
In a way, and it speaks to the cohort, and if you look at cohorts over time, you can see where the cohorts are up or down based on that one measure.
So maybe there is some value in that test.
It could be. Or, or it's incredibly inflexible because it's built on a bell curve.
Well, that too.
Either way.
Yeah.
But it is a good gauge of a cohort strength though. We could look at it that way, as one indicator of the strength of a cohort. Where students come in and where they, where they leave.
Right.
I'll even caution you though, when Pete says came in at 55% and then, you know, by the junior year, 55%. You have to have grown a, a year's growth each year to, to still be at that level of the junior. We're not measuring you at a ninth grade level anymore, we're measuring you at a junior level. So.
You have the catch-up and the growth.
So, so right.
Right.
So, so you're still, just to stay the same, we need a year's growth every year.
Right. Not to mention the catch-up that you might need to do.
So, so it's a little more complicated than, than just simply comparing two separate cohorts. And it's very much more complicated because we don't get the kids till they're 14 years old.
It's a lot of catching up in four years.
And, and, and so.
It's not that much time.
We look at a lot of growth.
Yeah, those. So here, this might help. This is the.
Or not.
Or not, or it'll just confirm. You'll see there's a PSAT 10 there, right? And you'll see the SAT, and this is for the last year's juniors. You'll see that according to, this report comes from the College Board. What they do is they match the cohort and they say, here you are on the PSAT 10. And the line, the straight line is the, the growth and the dotted lines are the expected growth. So this is a way to look at a cohort and say, between sophomore year and junior year, when you took the PSAT to the SAT, did you meet the growth marker? And this tells us that our students did. So based on where they were tested in 10th grade, they met the growth target. The last one is just a predictive piece on if they took it again in the fall, which they did not. We don't have those numbers, but you do see the actuals right there. And according to College Board, we met, our students met the growth targets. Again, these are all constructs, right? I warned everybody at the outset. However, it does say that students did grow year to year. And going forward with the College Board, we will now be able to build cohorts, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. So we'll be able to see on this measure how students did in ninth grade, did they meet their 10th grade goals? Did they meet their 11th grade goals? So you can actually look at growth over time, which we actually, we've never been able to do that before.
The reason I want us to be cautious is, we have students really working hard. And we have teachers really working hard to support the students. And it's not accidental that they're growing a year, in a year's growth. I mean, I mean, that is expected growth and, and that doesn't happen if there aren't good things going on in their instruction. So I just want to be careful how we, how we conclude things because of, you know, of looking at two different cohorts.
Makes sense.
So I'm always the voice that talks about community impact. This is, this is information, this is data that we have, that we can use. But I, I agree with Jude, some of it is very predictable, unfortunately. And it's not just data that is predictable by academic benchmarks and so forth. It's predictable by other things that are happening in society that affect our black boys and our Hispanic boys as well. So I guess, you know, I want us to continue to figure out how we can support our students, especially our, our students of color, but all of our students. But then I want us to, as, you know, as a board, be very realistic about what our students deal with when the bell rings, when they go into the community, when they go back to the homes that they're, that they're in or when they go back into society and those factors that are also playing a part to how they show up at school. And, you know, we get our reports, we get the well-being reports, we get the discipline reports, and we're talking very similar about the same groups, right? And so, you know, I'm going to always say that it is up to us to do whatever we can to help our students be ready for whatever is waiting for them after they leave ETHS. But it is also our responsibility to know that we cannot do this alone. And we absolutely need the support of the community and the parents to help us figure this out. So that we can see the progression, so that these numbers are not that predictable in Evanston, where they shouldn't be, quite honestly. So, you know, I, I take this data and I'm like, okay, it is what I thought it would be. But we need to broaden the conversation. And it, it needs to go beyond what we continue to, to communicate what frustrates us. And until we change some of those other factors, until we can as a community, then we will continue to see the numbers that frustrate us. So I, I, you know, I know we talked about this before, we talked about what Crado is trying to do. We talked about collaborations with other organizations and everything like that. And, and we have to start pulling that apart. Those are very, very real situations that our kids are facing, whether it's, you know, homelessness, whether it's not eating at night, whether it's, you know, dealing with other issues that they're facing that are affecting this population we're talking about. Not all of them, so don't go back and say Monique said all black and brown kids are living in that kind of environment. But, yeah, when it comes to affecting or dealing with some of the issues, the societal issues that are affecting our black and brown students, we need to be real about that. And, and figure out what we can do about that. So.
I just want to echo Monique's remarks, because it certainly is a community issue and problem and crisis. There is a continuum that happens from the time that our children enter kindergarten or before then, from zero to three, to when we receive them in District 202. And belonging is a huge issue that factors into all of this. So I don't necessarily want to say, because also, I don't want to go on record saying that black and brown families are dysfunctional. All families have some form of dysfunction.
That's exactly right.
What I do know as an educator is that belonging plays a great part in this. And belonging is the responsibility, creating a culture of belonging is the responsibility of those who are in this building and in the District 65 buildings. So we're also dealing with mindset. And again, I've said this before in this forum, I am a father of three black males. I have the lived experience and I'm an elected official. I've had to go to bat for my sons. So I'm hoping everyone is listening to this. Black and brown families do not have a monopoly on dysfunction. We are all dysfunctional on some level. But we have to take the responsibility to, to ensure that these kids, scholars feel like they belong in our spaces. And this is why many graduates never come back. Black and brown families never come through these doors again, because they didn't feel that sense of belonging when they were here and when they were in the buildings of District 65. And I absolutely agree with Monique and Eric, this starts long before they enter our doors of District 202. I'm going to stop there, but.
Yeah. And I, I completely agree with all that's been said. And particularly what Monique said about this is more than just in ETHS. This is a broader community issue that we need to think about. But I guess my question as a board member of 202 is, you know, are there, what levers do we need to pull or pull differently or more? What, you know, what as a board can we do? Are there policies in the way? Are there new policies that are needed? I mean, I know that you guys are doing amazing work and you think about this. And our initiative for the Year of the Black Male, really pulling back the pieces of, you know, the layers of the onion to figure out at a really micro level, what is the impact? And, and what are we doing differently or what do we need to do differently? But I guess I just really put out there again, a call for boldness and for, you know, again, I know you guys work so hard, but we just, we continue to see numbers and there are things out beyond our, our walls that we, we need help with. But there's, I always say, well, what can, are we doing everything we can do? And, and, you know, I, you guys are terrific and, and, you know, you're doing amazing work. But I guess my question is always, what more can we do? And what more can we do? Like, what is it that we need to do to help you? Because, you know, that's where we sit as, as in a governance role. But, but we do, you know, like everyone, every year we look at these numbers and they, they might have changed, but that gap is still there and it's the same kids as a group, as a, you know, a subgroup. And, you know, I know this, this isn't the whole story. I mean, Chris's report last month, or earlier, the middle of, whenever that was in October, you know, showing what happened when we changed the GPA within our, our athletes, that was terrific. That's great stuff. But I, again, are there more things like that we need to be doing? So I think it's just, you have our support and, and our push to constantly look and, and push us to help you, because we just, we, we're tackling this, but we need to, to do more. So, and you know that, but I just want to say from a board, and I think everyone would share this with me, that we're, we want to be a part of this in whatever way. And if you need to hold us to task, we are, I, I am certainly willing to be there. So, thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I, I think that it is important for us as a board to ask the administration, the district, if there's more we can do as a board to support this, to support this work. I know that the, the district is doing, doing a lot and, and I am, I'm proud of the work we're doing as a school. These numbers, these numbers just motivate me. These numbers make me want to continue the work that we're doing and hear more about how we're supporting students. And I know that we will have reports of the supports we're providing. I want to hear what those supports are and, and how those supports have been making a difference. I know this isn't going to change overnight or in a year, so I want to see the numbers. I want to see the multi-year reports so that I can make some, at least comparisons for the pattern. I want to see the trajectory improve. So I think that's really important. But if there's more we can do as a board, then I want to hear what else we can do as a board, because I think we all share the concerns. Other comments, questions? Carrie, I have some more of cough drops for you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So where are we? We are. Comments, comments from the public.
And here comes Pete.
And here comes Dr. Beavis with that.
Okay. Introduction to comments from the public. Speakers who have signed up for public comment will be invited in the order that they have signed up to address the board for up to three minutes. I will keep time and signal you at the end of two minutes as a courtesy. I will let you know it is time to stop at the three-minute mark in the event that that becomes necessary. I usually just fumble with my phone at that point and it beeps. Speakers are asked to come forward and speak at the lectern up here. Please state your name and address. Public comments generally pertain to school district matters, but comments about any individuals are expressly prohibited. Please understand that the school board does not respond to public comment, but will listen carefully and will follow up as the board deems appropriate. All right. So we have several folks signed up for public comment. The first person is Carrie Levin.
Can you turn the mic on, Carrie?
There's a button now.
Yes.
It was on?
It's on. Thank you.
Now you can start the clock.
I haven't started it yet, I'm waiting.
Oh, ready, ready, set, go. Hi, everybody. I'm Carrie Levin. I'm the Executive Director of Evanston Case, which is a nonprofit organization that provides support and advocacy services for families in our community who have children with disabilities. I have to say, I came here this evening to sort of enter into the conversation about academic achievement, all the things that y'all have been just trying to get your hands around tonight. And it's a, like, it's a difficult conversation to enter into, I have to say. A little bit intimidated, a little bit concerned that I may offer something that may not be, because I'm not a data head. So I'm just going to say what I believe to be true. And Dr. Beavis, if in some way I've missed the mark, please let me know. But I, I'm here again tonight because, you know, I was here before you last year and I think probably the year before. I was highlighting the numbers for our students with IEPs. And last year's numbers were really upsetting, but I have to say this year's are really abysmal. Couple points to titillate and here, Dr. Beavis, here's where I'm hoping I'm understanding properly. I was thinking about Chart 1 on Page 6. It's the one that identifies sort of the, the, all of the stuff in one graph, right? And it's difficult to compare this data to last year's report, because there's kind of an apples and oranges thing going on as far as I can tell. Last year and the year before, the report looked at the percentage of students in each demographic group who met at least three of the college readiness indicators. But this year, as far as I can tell, the report highlighted, highlighted the percentage of students meeting at least two of the college readiness indicators. And so it looked to me like maybe. And so it looked to me like maybe shift in the goalpost a little bit. And it's tough to interpret, but the bottom line is, the data's really upsetting and scary and I'm feeling like it's an emergency. If you look at the, the data through sort of a, please.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Oh, if you look at the data through a consistency standard, like say we're gonna sort of make it all based on the same number of benchmarks. The students with IEPs meeting or exceeding college readiness benchmarks in twenty seventeen was 29%. In eighteen, it was 35. And in 2019's report, it was 15. Okay? 15. So we're looking at a 20% decrease. We're looking at a pretty precipitous drop. I heard some mention before about maybe the numbers of kids are a little bit different. I wanna understand that better. But here's the thing. Math and ELA proficiency data is worse. GPA data is worse. Attendance data is worse. Extracurricular engagement rate is worse. Again, I think it's an emergency. I think we need to really understand this. Thank goodness.
Oops, sorry.
Thank goodness, Dr. Campbell, there's gonna be a special education report. And I think it is important for us to really figure out what's, where's the causality? Where's the explanation and so forth? And so what I'm looking for, am I beeping?
Yeah.
What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is, let's figure out why the kids aren't doing, why they're doing so poorly and what we're gonna do about it. Let's have a robust plan that's evaluate services and supports, figure out what's working, what's not working, what's the impact, and then let's fix it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Bella Hubbard.
All right. Hello, ETH Board, ETHS Board. I'm Bella Hubbard. I'm a senior at Evanston Township. And I'm here today to talk about the climate crisis. So when I think about the climate crisis, I feel as though I have an enormous and devastating weight on my shoulders. For this reason, I'm a member of E-Town Climate Action, a group of students who have joined together to fight against it. We are part of a school, we are part of a global movement fighting to change the legacy brought to us by generations of neglect. I love our team because although we are all deeply afraid and disturbed by the crisis we've been born into, we all truly inspire one another to work to change this narrative of doom and destruction to one of hope and resilience. Our first enormous success was the global climate strike on September 20th. Along with seven million people worldwide, 300 ETHS students walked out of the high school and marched to Fountain Square, where we were met by an equally large and passionate group of concerned parents, children, and elders. There, I was able to speak among many other powerful speakers about the threat of the climate crisis and its current impacts, especially on communities of color. The climate walkout was a chance for students to speak up and it was a wake-up call for many others. Now, we are focused on seeing a more systemic change within our school. We need our adult leaders to show us that they understand the urgency and gravity of this crisis. ETHS does enormous amounts of good within this community and we thank you sincerely for your commitment and care. But this climate crisis is not leaving. It is worsening. And until ETHS switches to renewable energy, provides all its students with a strong climate curriculum, and switches to an efficient and comprehensive waste system, it is contributing to this crisis. It is contributing to the destruction of our future. The success of our climate strike showed the Evanston cares.
One minute.
With its Climate Action and Resilience Plan, the city of Evanston has shown us that they are stepping up to the task of fighting the climate crisis at hand. We need the same from ETHS. Other schools around the country are implementing these policies successfully. Board members and administrators have been invited to join the Sustainability Committee, which consists of teachers, students, and community experts. While many schools have had to hire sustainability coordinators, we have experts in these fields who are donating their time to this important cause. Your participation would be a huge first step towards demonstrating your understanding of the crisis we face together. ETHS is a powerful and incredible school and I truly love this school, which is why I'm here to step up in front of all of you and tell you that ETHS needs to step up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Callie Stolar, it looks like. I'm gonna do my best to read the handwriting.
Hello. My name is Callie Stolar and I'm a junior here at ETHS. I'm here because this is an emergency. This school is preparing us for a future that we might not even have. We are in a crisis. Climate change is not just an issue looming on the horizon, not something that we have, we have time to sit around and talk about. Natural disasters are killing thousands. Species are becoming extinct and California is literally on fire. This is the biggest, most severe issue of our generation that exaggerates every other social issue we are forced to deal with. But change doesn't just occur overnight. Our president isn't going to suddenly install solar panels on the White House. No, change starts with us. It takes a plan and steps in the right direction, starting with this school. Let Evanston be an example of what one community can do. Evanston should be leading the charge in the fight against climate change and this school, as a pillar of our community, should be the first to implement these necessary changes. As adults, as adults, it is your job to come up with this plan. Addressing climate change needs to be a priority. You have the power to create change. Students across the globe have been forced to strike, forced to take radical action, and forced to oppose their political leaders. We don't want to oppose you. We want to be, we want you to be on our side, fighting for our future and protesting our federal government along with us. We want to go to a school that not only reflects our values in speech, but in action as well. We want to know that you have our back, that you want my future to be glistening with opportunities instead of shrouded in the smog left by fossil fuel companies. I want to be able to sleep at night. I want to wake up knowing that the adults in charge deserve my trust. I want to grow up in a world that is not doomed by its very inhabitants. We cannot pride ourselves on being a progressive liberal community while still contributing to the problem. We cannot continue to turn a blind eye. This is an emergency. We are living in a time of crisis. The fight against climate change starts with this school, right now. We have the power to create momentous change. Let ETHS be the start of a ripple effect that spreads across our town, the city, the state, until our entire nation turns green. I will forever be grateful for the education I've had at this school. And 50 years from now, I wanna be standing here with my own children, celebrating our victory for the climate, for our planet, and for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Evernissa Beach.
Hello. My name is Evernissa Beach and I'm a senior at ETHS. When I think about climate crisis, I feel devastated. Being from Jamaica, where, where it is unsafe to hurricanes and other natural causes. Due to climate change, it affects both me and my family members. Science tells us that we must have a comprehensive plan that strikes for zero waste in order to tackle the climate crisis. Plastics are made of fossil fuels and according to National Geographic, only 9% of plastics are actually recycled. 9%. Each year, eight million met- met tons of plastics end up in our oceans. According to scientists, at Project Drawdown, reducing food waste is number three on the list of solutions to this crisis. 62% of Americans do not recycle anything because they are worried about doing it incorrectly, which shows us how important it is for people to be educated in recycling. Once recycling is improved, consider the system of recycling food waste, also known as composting. Americans throw away almost half of the food that is produced, almost 3,000 pounds per second, which is insane as one in four people in our country is, which is insane as one in four people in our country are food insecure. Composting is also, is also part of the climate solution because the food that, that rots in landfills releases methane, which is more intense than greenhouse's gas than carbon. We are so fortunate to live in a community that has a plan to address this crisis. ETHS needs to make big changes quickly. Schools around the country are making huge progress and ETHS needs to be a leader and join them. Oak Park River Forest just committed to getting their energy from 100%.
One minute.
Renewable sources in the near future. Newt- Newtura now compost their cafeterias on both campus. North, North will soon be doing the same. Our school is falling behind in the situation to, to climate change and it's frustrating that no one is doing anything about it. District 65 schools have comprehensive recycling and composting program in many of their lunchrooms. Many kids from middle and, and elementary schools are coming to high schools with previous knowledge, which is, which is fantastic, which is a fantastic opportunity, which we must maximize. Students have put together a committee of experts, including a zero-waste school professional and a transporting planner and an energy policy expert. All we are asking for you to do is show up, collaborate, heed their advice. I want to thank Mr. Brown for attending these meetings and for his, his effort in improving recycling at ETHS. But one administrator is not enough.
You finish your sentence, though.
Which is not enough to show us that you understand the gravity of the situation. Perhaps you have heard of the three H, the three Rs, reduce, reuse, and recycle, but many do not know that the best option is to use less stuff from the beginning. Reusable water bottles, for example, is a good place to start. Recycling is the third choice because it requires a great deal of energy to do. That said, it must be done properly, which means educating teachers, students, staff, and administrators.
And time. Thank you. Next up is Effie Jacobson.
My name is Effie Jacobson. I'm a senior at ETHS and a part of E-Town Climate Action. When asked to write about a topic important to me for a college application, I wrote about the anxiety I have about the climate crisis we are experiencing and the lack of action being taken. ETHS is an exemplary institution in so many ways. I find it unacceptable that this school fails to teach its students about one of the most pressing issues of our time. I'm here today to say that we need a comprehensive climate curriculum at ETHS and we need it now. Before I begin, I would like to thank Dr. Beavis for beginning this process and supporting our work so far. A climate curriculum at ETHS will mean teaching students a foundational knowledge of climate change in a wide range of classes. This includes the science of climate change, how human behavior contributes to it, the injustice and racism within it, and how we can build our resilience. This will ensure that ETHS students are ready for the growing demand of a climate literate workforce in the United States. I'm very fortunate to have grown up in a family that senses the urgency of this issue. I grew up understanding the importance of our actions and the consequences of our inactions. Many students are not as fortunate. It is the responsibility of ETHS to prepare its students for the climate crisis that we are just beginning to experience. A holistic climate curriculum at ETHS would address the environmental inequity in Evanston and around the world. Low-income communities and communities of color are more likely to be in close proximity to carcinogenic waste stations and coal plants and not have access to clean water. The direct effects of climate change, of the climate crisis are already affecting those most vulnerable, yet the people perpetuating this crisis are the least affected. According to a poll by NPR in April 2019, 80% of parents and 86% of teachers support climate education in school. The Prime Minister of Italy just announced that all public schools will be required to implement at least 33 hours of climate curriculum in the 2020 school year. We have a clear mandate for change. Evanston prides itself on its progressive, inclusive policies. ETHS can have a profound impact and it owes it to their students to do everything in their power to prepare us for this crisis. Thank you.
Greta Stolt, it looks like, on the sign-in.
My name is Greta Stolti and I'm a junior at ETHS. I'm a member of E-Town Climate Action and I'm here because this is an emergency. The solutions are at hand. ETHS must commit to a transition to 100% renewable energy in alignment with Evanston's Climate Action and Resilience Plan, both to save energy, money, and become greener. Energy production is one of the biggest contributors to fossil fuel emissions in the world. ETHS uses natural gas and while that's better than coal, it's still a fossil fuel and it's not renewable. By allowing so much energy to be wasted and such unsustainably sourced energy at that, the school is only contributing even more to the crisis that is in the way of their own students' futures. However, if the school implemented solar energy, it would be contributing to the solution as opposed to the problem. Scientists tell us that the greenhouse effect is caused by the pouring of 110 million tons of man-made pollution into our atmosphere every day. This carbon pollution is thickening our atmosphere, trapping more heat within it. This is wreaking havoc on our weather systems and causing extreme heat, which kills more Americans than all other climate-related disasters. Additionally, climate change is causing more frequent, more intense, and longer-lasting floods, storms, droughts, and fires. If ETHS continues its current energy policies or drags its heels in committing to change, we will knowingly choose to be part of the problem. You have experts at your disposal to help you write and implement an effective plan to transition to renewable energy. One way to do this is through solar panels. By investing in renewable energy, ETHS will be doing its part to reduce its carbon footprint. According to Al Gore's Climate Reality Project, enough sunlight comes down to our planet every hour to fulfill our energy needs for an entire year. If ETHS decided to invest in installing solar panels on the actual building, we would be generating our own energy that we would not need to pay for. Another option would be paying for renewable energy from a company that produces it and sells it to us. Most renewable energy companies charge you the same per month.
One minute.
Than normal electrical companies do. This means that there's no reason to keep using fossil fuel-generated energy over the other options. In seventh grade, I began to understand the reality of climate change and I became depressed. It consumed most of my day, the constant fear of our planet becoming inhabitable. I tried to find every possible way to make an impact. I started composting, I picked up trash, I even convinced my parents to install solar panels. I still spend so much time worrying about climate change and how it will affect my future. ECA dedicates hours every week to thinking of ways to save our planet and we can't do it alone. If you can't do it for the students, do it for your children, your nieces, your nephews. Give them the future they deserve. Nobody should be forced to grow up in a world that requires urgent repair. Thank you.
Next up is Aldrick Martinez Olsen.
Hi, my name is Aldrick Martinez Olsen. I am a senior and a member of Evanston Climate Action and I'm here because this is an emergency. Many of the young activists in this room today are white. However, the sad truth is that those white activists won't be as impacted by climate change as their peers of color. Environmental justice is the fact that climate change has a disproportionate impact on low-income communities and communities of, and people of color. Because I live where I do, I am lucky that I don't have to immediately deal with the effects of climate change, but others in my family aren't as lucky. My dad lives in San Pedro de Zula, Honduras. Our days are spent inside a poorly built house, not daring to move and create body heat as the Uluwa Valley rises to record temperatures. Drought has devastated the harvests of many Honduran farmers, causing them to flee north as climate refugees. Most of the waste there is diverted into rivers or burnt in backyards as the government does not provide waste collection. Whenever I wanna kick off my shoes and enjoy my Evanston bubble, I remember that the fight is not just for my future, but the future of my friends and family and millions of others who won't have another option when their land disappears. I care about the futures of my minority peers and I need you to care too. I need you to care because the children of the fifth ward are breathing in toxins from the waste transfer station and the fumes of numerous garbage trucks that pass by. I need you to care because it is the low-income students who will not be able to keep up with their energy bills as summers get hotter and hotter. I need you to care because it is low-income students who have less, less access to fresh organic produce and are unwillingly contributing to a faulty commercial system that is propagating climate change and lowering the years they have left to live. We cannot wait any longer. When you're a low-income family, it is now usually a priority to educate your children on climate change. We cannot let minority and low-income students walk blindly into this climate trap. We must educate everyone on this issue as the one place, at the one place where all communities come together, school. Remember that every sustainable action this school takes helps provide all its students with a safer climate future, but more importantly, those of us who don't have one on our own. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Noam Hasek Lawi.
Yes, close enough.
All right.
Hi, my name is Noam Zachlowe, and I'm your last speaker from this group. I moved to Evanston from Florida when I was in third grade. Other than maybe Disneyland and Tim Tebow, it seemed as though Evanston was better than Florida in every way. For the past three years, E T H S has provided me with unique opportunities and resources that I will be forever grateful for. I have been lucky enough to meet and work with students from every part of the world. Recently, I noticed two commonalities I have with many of these students regardless of our differences. The first is that many of us do not want to have kids. Neither me nor any of my peers can justify bringing life into the world given the state that it is in. I feel uncertain that there will be a future to give to the next generation. Growing up with two amazing parents, it pains me to know that motherhood is quickly becoming an unethical choice. This leads me to the second similarity I have found. The climate crisis has affected the mental health of me and many of my friends. It is nearly impossible to stay focused on school or motivated for any extracurriculars when I know that there are only eleven years left until irreversible damage is made to the environment. Just like me, many of my friends feel burdened by the weight of a dying planet, and the students that don't feel this constant pressure have yet to be truly educated on the harsh realities of the climate crisis. It is time for E T H S to step up. Step up because we only have eleven years, because our current waste and energy system is simply irresponsible, because my generation has a right to be educated about our future, because students of color will be the first to suffer the consequences of climate change. Step up for your children and your children's children. Tonight, my peers and I have highlighted the key issues we feel E T H S must address, but tonight is just the beginning. Going forward, we want to see real changes being made. Evanston has plenty of organizations that are willing to provide support. A simple first step would be having an official school board member on the sustainability committee. E-Town Climate Action wants to find the most effective solution to the climate crisis, and we want to do this by working with the administration and the school board.
One minute.
E T H S is one of the country's best high schools, and all you can, and you all can show that. It deserves this reputation by confronting this crisis. However, we need this to become a priority and to be dealt with urgently. Evanston Climate Action will continue to move forward on with this issue. We invite you to step up as courageous leaders and partner with us, because we will be back. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beavis. All right. We are at FOIA. Dr. Beavis, we have a couple of FOIAs in?
We have two FOIAs, and the responses are in the packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our board committee reports, do we have any board committee reports?
I have the EdRed report.
Pat, okay, super.
So, our state legislative group, EdRed, few updates there. Save the date, January twenty-seventh, for our annual legislative dinner. The veto session is actually in, in gear this week. It's the second week of the veto session. The special education bill that we've talked about several times, Gretchen and I have talked about several times, is not coming up in the veto session but will come up likely in the spring. Property tax relief, Tax Force has filed some legislation. There won't be any action during the, the veto session that's happening now, but there is some potential discussion in the pension subcommittee that might come up during the veto session. Student discipline is an issue that is expected to come up this week, and specifically around two different things. So, data collection, districts are required to annual, submit an annual information regarding their discipline required by the civil rights data collection, and there's, so the, and so that's one issue that they're talking about. The other is that there's a discussion around how ISBE develops the list of the top twenty schools with the highest expulsion rates, and so they're looking at how that's calculated. So, these are just a few updates, but I, I just want to put a shout out to Sarah Hartwick, who runs EdRed, and she does a terrific job of updating us. The emails we get from the floor to your door are just terrific, and so read those and you'll know lots more. Thank you.
Thank you. You're right, those are very informative. All right. Word student board report.
Thank you. So, I'm going to start by talking about the November eighth DACA rally with Northwestern. The mission was to make the Supreme Court aware of the fact that they oppose the repeal of the rollback of DACA. The rally was also an opportunity to remind undocumented people in our community that students stand by them and support them. So, a group of students from Students Without Borders, which is a student club from E T H S, participated with, I think roughly thirty other individuals, and that was again on November eighth. And then also today, it's very cold, and it's a reminder that students are facing issues surrounding transportation, housing, and clothes that will support them in this kind of temperature, and so that is a reality that many students are facing currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Dr. Witherspoon.
Yeah, I just have several reminders of upcoming events. All the information is on the website, so I, I won't go into details on all of them, but I'll highlight them for people who are interested. We have our visual arts exhibition in open house tomorrow, November thirteenth, from five to seven. We collaborate with District Sixty-Five on that. We have our college and career services offering the college prep and planning for freshmen, sophomores, and their parents, and that will be this Thursday at six-thirty P M, November fourteenth. We have community conversations with the school board, open to the public, those that will be held at Fleetwood Jordaine Community Center, and that will begin at seven P M this Thursday, November fourteenth. Our career and technical education department will be hosting engineering information night from six-thirty to eight o'clock on Thursday, November twenty-first, and students in the eighth through the eleventh grades are invited to come and, students and their families to come to learn more about Project Lead the Way and engineering and pre-engineering programs. The Family Talk Series event will be held at E T H S on Thursday, November twenty-first. It's a program that is entitled Social Media and Mental Health. It'll begin at six-thirty in the evening in North One Twelve. This is for parents, guardians, and current E T H S students. And we have special education information night for incoming families, it would be eighth-grade families, who can come to that on Thursday, December fifth, from six to eight o'clock P M. Also encourage everybody to the E T H S jazz big band concert. That'll be on Tuesday, December third, from seven to nine P M in the auditorium. As you can see, I just thought I might rattle through a few dates to give people a little teaser on things they might want to follow up on. I also want to mention, though, that we have, beginning on the, November eighteenth through November twenty-second, our Dean's Can Food Drive. That is an annual event here at the high school. It's a big event. They accept non-perishable food items as well as monetary contributions that help meet the needs and, and purchase perishables. We ask for the help of all E T H S families who might be able to help contribute to this so that we can share with other families here at E T H S for the holidays. The annual gift drive is also going to kick off next Monday, November eighteenth. This is run through the community service office. We end up having hundreds upon hundreds of gifts brought into the school for this. Like the canned food drive, it is just unbelievable to see the outpouring for families here in our community, and we would ask everybody to really step up on that as well. And finally, and probably the thing that we wanted to hear the most, we have a fall break coming up. I used to call it Thanksgiving break, but now it's fall break, and it'll be, will be closed Wednesday, November twenty-seventh through Friday, the twenty-ninth. And judging from the weather, maybe we should call it first winter break, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, I am now officially convening the two thousand nineteen levy public hearing. This public hearing is being held due to the district's intent to adopt and aggregate levy two point nine one percent in excess of the two thousand eighteen levy. Ms. Rodino, did you publish notice of this hearing?
We did publish the notice on October thirty-first.
Okay, thank you. The proposed levy will provide funds to support the usual expenses of Evanston Township High School. An amount in excess of two, two point nine one percent overall increase is to be levied to ensure that our extension base increases by tax, by the tax cap CPI of one point nine percent plus any new property.
Anyone desiring to present testimony may do so at this time.
Ms. Rodino, do you have any comments?
I do have a short presentation. I promise it will be short. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is our annual presentation of how the tax levy works and what the increases will be and, and the purpose of some of the money. Also, I just want to note that when we do move into action items, there's a resolution that is related but different, so I'd be happy at that point to say a few words about that, just so you all understand what that is, because that's not something that we do all the time. So, I'll just go into the slides. I'm going to go through a few of them pretty quickly because I have some standard things like definitions. I know it's sort of dry and boring, and that's okay, I'm not offended by that, but by all means, if you have questions, I can back up to, to those slides when we get through. So, as I mentioned, we did publish the notice on October thirty-first. Tonight is the public hearing, our truth in taxation hearing, and then what we'll do is we'll come back on the, in the December ninth meeting, and the actual levy will be adopted, and then sometime between that day and the last Tuesday in December, which happens to be the thirty-first this year, I'll take a trip downtown and make sure all the paperwork gets filed so that the levy's complete and ready to go for the county for the spring tax collections. This is a screen of just some technical terms about the types of levy and what some of the items mean. We'll get to some of those later in the presentation, so I won't stop and read all of those. Just a few basics, though, the, our budget consists of two different levies because of the way that Cook County collects taxes. The first is second half of the prior year levy, it, it's fifty-five percent of basically of what was collected the previous fall. And then the next payment is, it, it's really confusing if you read it off the words, but in the spring, we get fifty-five percent of the previous levy, and then in the fall, we get the rest. So, that's why when we look at tax numbers in our budget book, there are two numbers because it is split in Cook County. So, you all know that we're subject to tax caps, which limits what we can tax. It's based on the prior year's amount of tax levy, and then there's an increase, which is the lesser of either five percent, which we haven't seen that in my thirteen years here, or the prior consumer price index, which is more like point eight, one point nine, you know, much lower number than five. So, we're generally always subject to whatever the prior year consumer price index is. That comes out each December, so in December, we, we know what we're looking at for the following year. So, for the, the two thousand nineteen tax levy, the cap rate is one point nine percent, and in Cook County, because of the way that I mentioned that the taxes are calculated, it's a blend of two levy year, two CPI rates. So, we had a two point one last year and a one point nine this year, so let's just call it an even two percent. I like dice round numbers. So, what we do is we publish and advertise that the estimated levy increase will be higher than that number I just mentioned, but we know that that's never what the district will actually be able to collect, but the reason that we levy, it, it's less than a percent higher than that two percent that I just mentioned to you, but the reason that we always levy a number that's a bit higher is we're fortunate in Evanston to have new property every year, and so, so we don't really know how much of that property comes on the tax rolls. We estimate it to be about seventeen million dollars a year. Some years it's higher, and there have been some years in the past five or six where it's been much lower. But we like to make sure that we issue the levy in case some of that sizable new property comes on the tax rolls, we can be able to collect it. The other reason that you sometimes have an actual published levy of higher than what your CPI is that you want to be able to collect any taxes on a TIF district if anything's expiring. We've had large TIF districts in Evanston, we don't have one expiring this year, but there have been some smaller TIFs, and, and so you'd have a little bit of a percentage increase just in case. So, I, I just want to reiterate that that two point nine one is not what we really expect to collect, but it's a, a catch-all for new property and, and anything additional that may come in. So, I, I think there's not much difference to, to talk about on the screen of the actual numbers. Everything other than the education and the operations fund are the same tax levies as last year. Operations and maintenance has increased because of some construction needs throughout the building that we don't handle through the capital improvement building, so those are more of our maintenance and repairs. And then the education fund, of course, is the, the largest of our property tax increases because that's what supports most of our staffing and scheduled raises and increases in cost of benefits or salaries. So, we also have a tax levy for debt service, and that's what the resolution in the later action item will relate to, but what happens is the county takes, we submit all of our bond issuances and debt service payments to the county, and then the county actually imposes the tax levy to cover that debt service. So, while we do issue in our publicized ad for the levy, we do issue unexpected debt service amount. The reality is it actually just comes down to whatever we need to meet the debt service payments, which of course are limited by the, the caps. So, similar to what we talked about last year on an average home valued in Evanston, the, the average, we always have kind of presented the board with an average dollar increase that would be attributable to that increase, so that increase would be about seventy dollars on a total tax bill, but I just want to make sure that we all remember that we really levy for a dollar amount. So, the dollar amount is really just going to be based on what that consumer price index allows our share to increase. So, the bad news for homeowners in this area is, is that two thousand nineteen is a reassessment year. The Cook County assessor who took office, I, I think it would have been last year, stated that the median market values of, sorry, this was the previous assessor, had stated what the single-family home values had increased by, and that was twenty-five percent between twenty thirteen and twenty sixteen, but the new assessor has estimated that values could increase up to fifty-two percent for, I think it's primarily for commercial but also for residential. But again, I also want to mention here that District Two-O-Two does levy for a dollar amount, so we don't really benefit from increases in the E A V. The only thing that really affects what we collect is what we collected the previous year and whatever that consumer price index allows us to increase that by, which, as we said, is two percent. And the only other difference is the new properties that come on the tax rolls. So, just a little reminder, last year at this time when we talked about levies, we talked about the Washington National TIF. It was a big TIF district in Evanston, and that closed in the fall of twenty eighteen. There aren't any major TIFs really active at this time, not to that level, and there's nothing that's closing anytime soon. We do have an annual meeting of what's called the Joint Review Board, which is the taxing bodies other than the city that are affected by those TIF districts, and we don't have a set date for that yet, but it meets every November, so that should be coming soon. And that's it. That's my fourteen slides.
Wonderful.
In ten minutes, hopefully. But I, I know it's, it's, I mean, there's not really a good way to make that interesting, but it's a lot of money for us as well as taxpayers, so I do like to take the time every year to at least go through what we, what we believe are really modest increases to our levy, and so I do like to talk to you about that every year.
Yes. Very important. All right, are there, is there, is there any further testimony? Is that where I am?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Hearing no further testimony, I now declare this hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, we are at action items, and our first action item is approval of resolution, right? Am I right? Okay. Approval of resolution for supplemental debt service levy. And were you going to explain this a little to us?
If I can.
Yeah.
I felt like the memo maybe wasn't quite as clear as I could be, but again, some of these topics are difficult to try to explain in simple words. So, what I wanted to say is that the last time we did a bond issuance was the spring of 2018, and at that time, when we work with our bond advisors to issue those bonds, we work with the Consumer Price Index that we know at the time, and that one was 1.5, I think. So, this all relates back to the limits that we have on the debt that we can issue, and we're allowed to incorporate that Consumer Price Index increase into that debt service levy. So, we didn't know what the current Consumer Price Index rate was when we issued those bonds in the spring of 2018. So, now we know. We know what we're legally allowed to increase, and in order to capture that, it amounts to a total of $52,000, but in order to capture that with the regular property tax levy, the board has to pass a resolution in order to acknowledge that increase in the CPI from 1.5 to 1.9. So, I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Wally?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. Next action item is acceptance of Illinois School Report Card. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wally?
Can I just ask a question? Why do we accept this?
State law.
Is it? Okay.
And the reason they do it is so that they make sure that it was presented to the school board.
Oh, I see. We saw it.
This is what guarantees that the school board got the presentation.
They're trying to keep it a secret. Okay. Got it, got it, got it. I feel like I've asked this question before.
I think we talked about it last year.
No, it's a very logical question. It totally makes sense.
And in that case, my vote is yes. I have seen it.
So, you're not approving it, you're just accepting it.
Yes, now I appreciate that distinction.
Wally?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the consent agenda, which consists of approval of minutes from October 21st, 2019 closed session meeting, October 21st, 2019 regular meeting, treasurer's report from September 2019, approval of bills, personnel agenda, which consists of appointments to staff, exempt and support staff, change in status, salary adjustment and stipends, and resignations in operations.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wally?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Is there any old or new business that someone wants to present? If not...
Move for adjourn.
Could we have a motion to adjourn?
That's your new business.
You did?
I did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, and it's not 9:30 yet.